Let's get started. This is a public safety meeting of the Springfield City Council. I am your Public Safety Chairman, Counselor Orlando Ramos. We're joined by Counselors Marcus Williams and Counselor Tim Allen, and also Council President Justin Hurst. Who else do we have on this call? I see at least Attorney Mahoney. And?
Deputy Chief Kent.
Thank you both for joining us.
Thank you.
So one item on the agenda is continued discussion on the proposed Police Supervisors Union contract. The collective bargaining agreement was the subject of our last meeting at the Public Safety Committee. And at the request of my colleagues, I scheduled a follow-up meeting so that we can discuss and have further discussions on this collective bargain, or proposed collective bargaining agreement, and to see whether or not we're ready to move forward for a vote on Monday. So I'll turn it over to Attorney Mahoney if you want to start and kind of give us a brief summary. Here we are, and then we'll go from there.
Well, this is a tentative agreement reached between the city and the Springfield Police Supervisors Association. We began negotiations, I believe, back in January of last year. And they got sidetracked a little bit with the coronavirus. We got back together again during the summer. We hammered out a one-year deal. The period of time will be July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. It's a one-year contract, and we have a 1.5% increase for cost of living allowance in that contract effective on July 1, 2020. It's retroactive to that date. And we've made a number of minor typographical changes to the contract. And then we have a couple of substantive changes. One, of course, is the Assessment Center for employees that are lieutenants and are applying for the captain's examination. So they'll sit both for the captain's test and they'll also sit for an assessment center, which is a more in-depth practical skills testing process that we have. So that, we have an agreement with the union on that. And the other piece of this, of course, is the disciplinary language, in which what we're going to do is we're going to expand that from a 90-day cap to a 120-day cap on bringing the charges. So it actually works in the city's favor by expanding the period of time in order to bring charges against an officer.
Thank you.
Deputy Kent.
I would always say that, like I said, as I said the last time, concerning the Assessment Center, it is the best practice. It's being adopted nationwide. We consider it, if you choose to allow this to go through, we consider this a big win for the city. We would look to eventually implement it at all levels of promotion. And the reason for that is, as I stated during the last meeting, it's more of a fair process. It measures more of a range of skills that are necessary to, for a police supervisor. And it gives those who may not test as well as others, who, it gives them an opportunity to make up for that with the Assessment Center. And which makes it a much fairer process for everybody. It makes it fair across skill levels and educational levels in pretty much any which way. As far as the 120-day rule, I agree that it's not ideal, but it's better than what we have now. And it's something we'll continue to work on, obviously. If you choose not to vote for this contract, then we're still sitting at the 90 days. I don't think that's beneficial to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council?
Counselor Ramos, can I ask?
Yep, Counselor Williams.
Thank you. Bill, I just had a question in regards to, and maybe Steve, this is more appropriate for you, for the 30-day extension. How did you come about to determine that was, you know, just kind of, I guess, a good compromise?
We were just looking to expand that period of time or eliminate that period of time. But in the negotiations that we, as we were going through it, we don't have a lot of money on the table here. So we thought this was a fair compromise. We also knew that we were getting the Assessment Center out of this. So for the point and a half that we have on the table, which is what we can afford, the expansion was good for us. That's how we reached that.
And I'd just like to add that, again, it's only 30 days. It doesn't seem like a lot. But that's the camel's nose under the tent, right? You know, the journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step. And once we get them to move a little bit on that, and they see that it's not the end of the world, we'll probably be able to make further movement on that in future contracts.
Right. No, I can respect that point. Well, and I also respect the fact that you heard the council too, to some degree, you know, and, you know, that is kind of where I'm hung up on, just in regards to, you know, enter departmental charges for wrongdoing. I mean, you know, I just kind of compare that to other positions in other fields. And, you know, there seems to be no max on that time in other places. So the question I posed alongside Counselor Ramos was just, why is there such a stringent, you know, kind of, and kind of insignificant amount of time contributed to this, to this? So, you know, I do appreciate, I mean, I guess 30 days is better than zero days, to your point, Officer. So, you know, it's a step in the right direction. If that, if there is no wiggle room further on what that can look like, then, you know, I'm kind of at where I was before, you know. I'm going to have to look at some of the value behind the Assessment Center to maybe be my determining factor as to if this contract is, you know, something that I would vote for. Because I just still do have some concern behind that number. Again, although it is, again, like I said, 30 days in addition. So I appreciate the due diligence behind that. And if I might just ask one last follow-up question behind the Assessment Center, how frequent are officers receiving that? That assessment?
Well, that'll be, it'll be a combination. The written exam, which they have already taken, and the grades are starting to be dispersed, and the Assessment Center, and then a smaller component, training experience. And I'm not quite sure what it'll look like if we'll only test those that are eligible.
Yep.
At that time for promotion on one position, and are we really going to test the three? Or are we just going to go and test everybody who may be eligible for a position while that list is good? I think that that would probably be the more cost-effective way to go, but I leave that to the cost people. I will say that it is a little time-sensitive, because even though the union voted it in, once that civil service list becomes certified,
Right.
I think that they might have a legitimate labor concern, legitimate labor action against us if we institute this thing afterwards. Because it'll look like we're, you know, we don't like the list that we're looking at, and we're trying something funny. So I just wanted to put that out there as well.
All right. Well, again, oh, sorry, Bill, go ahead.
I'm going to add to that. You know, the captain's exam, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy, you know, it's going to be every two years. And then typically, the way we do this is if you've passed the civil service test, then we bring you all in for the Assessment Center at the same time. So if we have 10 people that pass or 12 people that pass, we'll bring them all in at the same time so we're all getting the same Assessment Center. On the other piece of this, I just want to make sure that the council is aware where this language comes from, where the origination of it is. So this language for the 90 days, the 90 days to bring the charges and then have a hearing within a reasonable time afterwards, that was language that was in both the IBPO and the SPSA contracts prior to 1990. And then in 1990, there was an interest arbitration. And the council is well aware that if we can't make a deal, sometimes that's where we end up. And an arbitrator awarded the IBPO in that case the 90-60 day language, which is even tighter than what we have right now, what we currently have. So we're actually expanding that language from what we currently have. And it's better than what we have with the IBPO as well. But I think the council just needs to keep in mind that this is a creature, at least the 90-60 is a creature of interest arbitration. When the parties can't make an agreement, that's where we end up to get these deals to come to closure. That's not the case here. We've expanded that, it's better. And I want to point out some language from that interest arbitration word back in 1990. And I'll just read it, it's not long. But when the IBPO won the 90-60 language, the language was this. "The panelists persuaded that the union's proposal should be adopted with the following modification. The 90-day period shall mean that 90 days from the city became aware of the alleged offense. Thus, if a police officer was found guilty in another jurisdiction of a crime or misdemeanor, which had not been brought previously to the attention of the city, it would not preclude the city from initiating charges when it became aware of the offense." So we have this language, and this, again, this is not an SPSA case, it's an IBPO case, but same department, and really certainly a very closely related issue. So if we're not aware of it, when we do become aware of it, that's when I believe the clock starts ticking.
I appreciate the context, Bill, and as well as Officer Kent. So, yeah, Counselor Ramos, I mean, at this point, you know, I understand the time constraint. I do believe that this should come on the floor for more formal discussion. I think the context shared in the subcommittee, one thing about that is that other folks who are not on the call, sometimes are just not privy to that information. So I do think it's kind of important for them to also, the full body, hear that information on its face. A little bit better with the context I received today. But again, you know, I still have some thinking to do myself, but I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Counselor. Before we move on to the last, to the next question, Bill, can you, did you, when you read that, that was the original language in the contract that referenced when the time actually, when this was, when this was actually put into the contract? That was the original language, correct?
Let me explain. Prior to 1990, I believe they both had the same language, and that was the 90 days, and then a hearing within a practical period of time after the 90 days. The IBPO then went to interest arbitration, and they proposed this 90-day, 60-day language, saying that you got to have the hearing within 60 days of the charges being issued. And the arbitration panel in that, again, just to, I guess, demonstrate the process that we're in, the arbitration panel agreed with the union on that issue and said, "We think the 90-60 day is fine", with the caveat that it's really 90 days from when the city becomes aware of the issue. So if, you know, we're not aware of it, the complainant doesn't come forward for five or six months, and we don't have any way of knowing about it, and then we do become aware of it, I believe that's when the clock starts to tick. That could be an issue in arbitration, agreements arbitration, but if it is, we'll find it out there. But I believe that that's when the clock starts to tick.
So the original language stated that it is from the date that the city becomes aware of the incident?
Well, the current, the current language is really, I guess, what you would call the original language. But the IBPO, the other union, got that change in interest arbitration in 1990. I think this language here pretty much stays the same from 1990 all the way to today, 30 years later.
And so, however, the supervisors' contract states that it's from the date of the incident. And so where did that begin? Why is there, why is there a difference between the patrolman's union contract and the supervisors' contract?
Well, the patrolman's union contract, if you bear with me, I'll dig it out here. "All interdepartmental charges against a unit member shall be initiated no later than 90 days following the alleged offense or the date the city became aware of the alleged offense, whichever is later. And a hearing on said charges shall be held within 60 days thereafter unless a later date is mutually agreed upon by the parties." So it's the same concept. And again, as I was saying before, we have that language in here now, which reads, "You're going to bring the charges within 90 days unless it's not practicable. And if not, you got, you know, we just have to, we'll end up finding that out. If we sat on our hands and knew about something and didn't take any action, we won't be successful. But if we didn't know about it, I think we will be successful."
And so, so again, the language in the patrolman's union's contract is different than the language in a supervisors' contract.
Yeah.
And the language in a supervisors' contract is the only language in any collective bargaining agreement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that actually states that the clock starts from the date of the incident. And so I guess my question is, how did we arrive at that point where we have a collective bargaining agreement for the supervisors' union that states that it starts from the date of the incident? Was that always in the contract? Or was the language somewhere changed on the road?
Oh, you know, it goes back to the 90s anyways. That would be, my guess would be before, probably the 80s. I will tell you, Counselor, that the Chickaby Patrol Officers Contract reads, "All interdepartmental charges, noncriminal, against an employee shall be initiated no later than 60 days following the alleged offense or from the date upon which the employer became aware of said offense." So it's not just the city that has it. Certainly Chickaby has it as well.
So I think you misunderstood what I said. So the Chickaby language is similar to the patrolman's union contract. However, the proposed supervisors' contract is the only contract in the entire Commonwealth that starts from the date of the incident, not from the date that the department learned.
That's just why, it's the same thing. You're going to have, following, "All interdepartmental charges", this is the supervisors', "as proposed, as we're proposing tonight, against a unit member shall be initiated no later than 120 days following alleged offense, and a hearing on said charges will be held within a reasonable time. In the event that charges are initiated subsequent to 120 days, as a step forth above, the city will have the burden to prove that such delay was caused by circumstances beyond the control of the department, which rendered the initiation of charges impracticable within the time period." So there's, that language already exists, and the parties have already agreed to language that exists. That there's going to be times when this, when charges can be brought beyond 120 days. We've already agreed on that. It's just that the burden for us is going to be, we're going to have to be able to show why we're bringing it more than 120 days. And certainly, if we don't know about it, I think that's a great reason why we bring a case to an arbitrator beyond 120 days. We'll bring the charges beyond 120 days.
No, I appreciate your explanation, and I get it, I understand. I just, I just think that it's an unnecessary obstacle to have to go to an arbitrator because the 100 days, 120 days have lapsed. A much more common sense approach would be to actually put that in the contract so that it doesn't need to go to arbitration to get permission to bring charges against an officer after 120 days.
So again, we don't, we don't need permission from the arbitrator to do that. So we just go and we do it. And then what happens is if we investigate a case six months after something happens, a year after it happens, and we decide that, hey, there was really no harm, no foul here, that the police officer didn't do anything wrong, we don't do anything. If we find that the police supervisor did something wrong, we bring disciplinary action, we bring the disciplinary action. If they get suspended, they get suspended. Then the union has the right to grieve that. And they will grieve it, and they'll say two things. They'll say, "There's no just cause", and they'll say, "They didn't bring it within time limits." And we're going to come back, and we're going to say, "There is just cause, and we didn't bring it within 120 days because we didn't know about it. But when we found out about it, because the complainant didn't come forward, we then brought the case." That's how it's going to work. We don't need permission to go forward through this process. We're going to go through the process.
Dan, again, my thoughts is that it's an unnecessary obstacle. But we'll go to other questions. Counselor Allen, you have your hand up?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions. The first one is, this is a contract, this is for Bill. The duration of a year, what would be the normal duration of a contract? I know this is an unusual deal with COVID and everything. What made this be one year? And what would, you know, which means it'll expire next summer if we approve it? And what would be the plan for a subsequent contract?
I think, Counselor, because there is some, there is some uncertainty right now with the state with respect to revenue coming in for FY '22, '23, and '24, we're taking a more conservative approach to our contracts right now. And that's why when we, when we talk with the supervisors, and again, we began this negotiations in February of 2020, five months before this contract was, the Alaska contract expired, you know, we were thinking about, before COVID hit, we were thinking about typically going to four years on a contract, which is what I've brought to the council a number of times now. I've brought you a one-year and a three-year, or a two, one, and two. Just package up a few years, so we have some predictability about what our costs are going to be. But right now, because of the uncertainty in what FY '22, '23, and '24 looked like, both from state revenue and city revenue, we thought we'd step back a little bit, try to get through one year. And that's why we're doing a one-year deal.
And you feel, thank you, do you feel that this one-year deal is fine with the city financially if it were to go be approved?
Yeah, this has been, this has been reviewed by finance, and they're on board with going one year at 1.5%.
Thank you. And for Deputy Chief Kent, and for Bill, the Assessment Center, the addition of the Assessment Center and the explanation you gave a couple of weeks ago, Deputy Chief Kent, about how much better it is at assessing people's ability to handle real-life situations and all that? That was a good explanation. That was new to this, is this the first time that's been put in a contract here, or at least for the supervisors?
Yeah, it's the first time in a contract, but it's not our first time doing it. We've done it with the deputy chiefs in the past.
Okay. And was that something that by adding that, that was something that the union agreed to right away? Or is that something that, Mr. Kent, I believe you made it seem that the people who are affected by this like the Assessment Center? And was I right on that one?
Yes, I forget the exact numbers, but the union voted it, voted for it. And I don't want to quote numbers, but I think it was pretty overwhelming that they supported it.
Okay, great. And so are those the two big changes here? And this one, the 90 to 120 being one change, and the addition of the Assessment Center being the two new substantive things in this contract?
Yep, that's really about it, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill, just a quick question. And going back to Counselor Ramos's point with respect to the language and the difference between the supervisors' language versus the patrolman's, the patrolman's group's language, patrolman's union. My question is, if the language is essentially the same, why do, would we anticipate that there would be a problem with the supervisors' union agreeing to just put in the language that the patrolman's officers have? I mean, if you both agree that it's the same, it seems to me that they shouldn't have a problem with adjusting the language.
I think that the language we're going to have with the supervisors is better than the language with the patrol officers. And that's where, that's where we're going with this. And I would anticipate, you know...
So you think from the time of the incident? Is, and you think that language is better?
Yeah, I think that because you're going from, you're going from the 90 to the 120, and you already have that language, that second sentence, which I read now, and I can read it again if you would like, that, you know, it's not practical for us to bring charges within 120 days. We don't have to.
But it, to Counselor Ramos's point, it's very clear that it's an unnecessary step. Right? We should just say from the time of the incident. And then we get around all of that. Why can't we do that?
If you say just from the time of the incident, you're just, you're boxing us in. So what happens?
Tell me more.
Happens 120 days after the incident if no one came forward? If we say it's just 120 days from the date of the incident, and we don't find out about it until 130 days, now we're boxed out. What I, what we have now is a language saying, "Listen, if it's not practical, practicable for us to bring charges within 120 days, we can bring it after 120 days. And we can say, 'We didn't know about it because the complainant never came forward, and that's why we're bringing it in 150 days or 180 days. That's why we're coming forward.'"
Kind of process that one a little bit more.
I think what you were trying to say, I think you misspoke when you said that it should be from 90 days from the incident. I think where you were going is 120 days from the day that we learn of the incident?
Yes, from the day that we, from the day that we learned, yes, 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 yes. Why don't we just include that language from the day that we learned of the incident?
Well, that's, that's just not...
I mean, what's it? Wouldn't that be the strongest language?
There may be other reasons. And I'm not going to debate with you that it's not good to have something like that. But I would say that there may be other reasons that we bring something forward. You know, there may be something else that comes up. You could have a, you could have an international pandemic on your hands, and that could cause some justifiable reason for us not to bring something forward. At least that's an argument I'd like to reserve in case I need it down the road.
Okay.
Though that I would tie myself just to that, I like the fact that other, that other sentence there, Counselor, that says, you know, "Listen, if there's some legitimate reason that the city has not to come forward in 120 days, the city can rely on that."
It seems to me that you could, that you could include both, right? That you could, you could include both, and it probably would solve your concern as well, right? I mean, that to me seems a possibility. And if it's not, I mean, if it's not a, it doesn't seem to me like it should be a big deal for the supervisors' union either. But I'll leave that up to you. My second question is, is around the Assessment Center. What role does the police department play in the Assessment Center? The commissioner or anyone else? What role do they play?
Well, in the, in the actual Assessment Center itself, that's going to be done by an outside vendor. So we'll put out an RFP, and there's a number of companies that will bid on doing the Assessment Center in the Springfield Police Department. And what we'll do is we will provide the location for them to do it. The police department will provide a location for them to do it. HR will send a monitor to the Assessment Center and just, you know, watch the entire process. The police department doesn't play a real major role in this at all. There'll be some, I think, discussions with the police department prior to the Assessment Center taking place. That's typically written into the RFP so they understand the parameters of what the police department is looking for. So there'll be some meetings ahead of time. But the actual implementation of the Assessment Center itself is going to be done by an outside vendor and not by anybody in the police department.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask, if you don't mind, Counselor, Deputy Kent, who sat through one, was there any role, Deputy, when you were taking the Assessment Center for the city?
Yeah, there was several role-playing exercises. And again, just to put a little bit more information into what Mr. Mahoney was saying, they'll meet with the city, they meet with stakeholders, we all know that term. And they determine what the issues are in the city and what the city is looking for in a potential supervisor. And they'll, they'll structure their exercises based on those expectations of the police department, the city leadership, the community. And they tailor the exercises that way to potentially put forth the best candidate on those issues. So it's not just the police department says, "This is what we want, this is what we want, this is what we want." It's kind of a whole community thing. It's kind of a citywide thing. They sit down, they have meetings. And, you know, the exercises are supposed to reflect, or they do reflect, the needs of the city and the needs of the community. It's, it's a, it's a very stressful process. I went through it, it was very strenuous. I was fortunate enough to do pretty well. But, you know, it's just one of those things. Rather than, you know, sit there and memorize a book, and as soon as you take the test, you throw the book out the window because, you know, in two years, they're going to have a whole new set of books and a whole different test. I mean, this actually, this actually tests your skills. And a whole different test. I mean, this actually, this actually um tests your skills. And your, your knowledge, skills and abilities is what they call it, KSAs. To, you know, it's to how you will perform your job and what you know about your job and how you communicate, how you write and. How, how you prioritize potentially problematic issues that you'll be facing at whatever level you're tested for.
Definitely, can you, can you tell the council who the, where the assessors came from, the ones who are evaluating you?
Uh, what do we have? We had a deputy chief from the Bridgeport Police Department. We had a. Police chief from somewhere in the Midwest, I wanna say uh Ohio somewhere. And the third one was a former police chief. From a city out in eastern Massachusetts. Nobody with any ties to this area. They had no idea who we were. We're, we're identified by numbers only. So there, there's really no potential there to say, I want this guy, I want that guy, because you're only a number. But it was, it was, it was the first one I've ever done, but I have relatives who are in this field, who are assessors. And one of my, my brother is a police chief and he swears by it. He won't do it any other way. But it's, it's, it's the best practice.
It sounds like.
I'm sorry, Counsel, I didn't mean to interrupt you. While I have the floor, then I'll mute and you guys can wake up again when I'm done talking. But my only, my only other thing I wanted to say is this is time sensitive and the union has already voted on. This in its current form. And it's. Next July first, we start this whole process over again and we can address those concerns then. Um, but for now, great, it's not perfect, but we're getting another thirty days on the. Um, on the, on the ninety day rule. We're gonna go back at this, um, less than eight months, so. It's not perfect, but it's good for everybody, I think.
Yeah, I think it also gives you guys, if we leave it the way it is, gives you another uh bargaining chip in your favor. And I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure if I agree with, with, with that, but it sounds consistent with other bargaining uh. Units that I've, that I've spoken to. Uh, you guys really play hardball. Just to follow up on my last, on my last question, so this. Uh, the police department might play a role in the creation of the questions slash scenarios. That are created to uh really assess an officer, but they are not going to actually be present. Uh, in any way, shape or form, uh, contributing to the assessment of the actual individual.
Okay, so.
Is that accurate?
Yes, but with a, with a stipulation that, um, at least in the, in the assessment center that I took. The police department provided the IT experts. Um, and.
Okay.
I believe um, our, our budget director, Lynn Layden, sat in for some of the exercises.
You're the budget director?
Yeah, she, I, I think she was there. Or maybe, maybe, yeah, she was there with our human resources lady, uh, Lynn Vida-Von.
Okay.
And they just, they didn't contribute. And and again.
Thank you.
All you do is, all you do is, 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 all our role is, is to tell these, these. Companies what our issues are. We have no input in the tailoring of the, of the, um, we have input, but we. We don't have anything, any, any input into the exercises that are chosen or how, or anything like that. They choose, there's this structure that based on the input of the community and the police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Any other questions? Right, see none. Um, that'll wrap up our Public Safety Subcommittee meeting.
Uh, Counselor, I see Tim's hand up.
I think that was from earlier.
Oh.
I wasn't, I'm not, I'm not the host, so I'm not able to put his hand down, but I'm, Tim, did you have another question or was that, or your hand up from earlier?
That was from earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, yep, no problem. Um, so we'll, uh. So we'll take everything into consideration and uh, and we'll, we'll see where the, where the vote goes on Monday. Uh, you know, I'll, I'll take it out of committee for, for discussion. Um, I was hoping to have more counselors here so that we can avoid having a lengthy discussion on Monday. Um, but it looks like we may be headed that, in that direction, so, uh, thanks, everybody. Yep.
Not to interrupt you, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, but anybody who wants to call me at the police station to talk one on one about assessment centers. Uh, I'm, I'm more than happy to take their calls. They work every day. And I, I will give them as much information as I can, and if I don't have the answer, um, I'll find it for them.
We appreciate that. And if you can do me a favor, can you send an email to our staff with your contact information so that that way they can distribute it to all counselors?
We certainly can.
I appreciate that.
And, and Mr. Chair, if you could, um, if you could also advise our administrative assistants to. Or or yourself, send out an email to the counselors uh to either reach out to Bill. Uh, and or um to Officer Kent. Um, I'm sorry, I might have, what's your title, Officer Kent? I'm sorry.
Deputy Chief, which you can call me Steve.
My, my apologies. Um, if we, if we could have them reach out to Deputy Chief Kent in advance, because I too. Wanna avoid a lengthy discussion if at all possible. Um, so if we could send out that email, that would be excellent.
Okay, man.
Yep, we'll, we'll take care of that tomorrow. Thank you. All right, thanks, everyone.